I'm going to call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for Tuesday, November 4th. Ms. T, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quaidno?
Here.
Mr. Koots?
Here.
Thank you.
And Mr. Waters had notified us that he is not able to be here tonight, so please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next agenda item is correction and acceptance of city council meeting minutes. So we have minutes from October 21st, two meetings on the 21st and a meeting on the 27th. So any comments or corrections on those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll include those in our public record. Next, our board and committee reports and meeting minutes. We have several on the list there. Are there any questions or comments on these minutes? Mary?
I have a question regarding, well, this is maybe a question for Dan. If I, there's an inaccuracy in the Parks Board minutes where it says the votes are 4-0 and it's an error, the votes were 5-0, there were five members in attendance that I just caught in reviewing this. So is there something that I need to do to ensure that the accuracy is reflected when these minutes are accepted?
If, I think we should review that. I'm not sure if that was recorded or not. I'd like to see what the minutes say. You're saying your recollection was that it was a 5-0 vote instead of a 4-0 vote?
It is according to my, the records at the meeting. So I think these are inaccurate. So I would like to recommend that we remove the Park Board's minutes from today's approval
Yeah, we'll confirm.
acceptance, and we will, if that's okay, we'll make sure that the correct information is included and put them on next agenda.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. I had just a question on the Library Board minutes, a question for you, Michelle. I think if I read correctly on one of them, it looks like the Board has increased the budget for the library expansion, or at least that was discussed. And I just wanted to check, just to make our community aware, was that?
No, to my knowledge, nothing has been increased in terms of the budget.
Okay.
I think that what they're doing is trying to figure out what fits within the budget and playing around with that. But let me, let me do some digging. That might have been the one that I was not present at.
Oh, okay. And it's just, just wanting to make sure our community is aware of how that project's moving forward, so. But I don't have any corrections or anything. So any other comments or corrections? So we'll send the Parks Board minutes back to the Board for correction, and then the other ones will accept into our public record. Next is correspondence and constituent contacts. Greg Koots, would you like to start us off tonight?
Yeah, just a couple. One with some potential revenue raising ideas and one discussing Sandy Beach and Sandy Beach plans.
Great, thank you. Mary?
I had those, and I also had one on E. coli mitigation on Sandy Beach.
Okay, thanks. Michelle?
Nothing to add.
Okay, I had the two that Mr. Koots mentioned. I got a call about a potential zoning change on a city property, and then I attended the DNR Public Information Meeting, which Mary also attended and spoke at, and I attended the Joint Review Board. And that is it. Okay, our next agenda item is public comment. I don't think anybody has registered to speak tonight, so we didn't have anybody online. We don't have anybody in their room, so I think we can dispense with that agenda item and then move on to number eight, which is our City Manager's Report. And we've got a document from Drake. Drake, is there anything you'd like to highlight for us tonight?
If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I will also add that last week, Friday, the library submitted for a $2 million grant for the library expansion project from the state local projects grant program through DOR. So we anticipate kind of early 2026 being notified of if that was successful.
Fantastic. Sounds like a great opportunity. Are there any questions or comments on Drake's monthly report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to council business. So our first item is Resolution 25-65. Ms. T, would you read that for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-65, conditional use permit declarations and findings, Andrew and Melody Meyer grading, filling, and excavation on a slope greater than 20% within 300 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Rock Lake for the purpose of constructing a detached garage landscaping and site amenities, 353 South Ferry Drive, parcel identification number 24607131414032.
Thank you. I know that the property owners are here, but can we have staff? I'll start this one off?
Sure, I'll provide the groundwork for you. The petitioners went through an application process with then-Building Inspector Troy Evenson. They were directed to pursue a variance for placement of the garage. The conditional use permit is required for any grading, excavating, lagooning, ditching activity within 300 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Rock Lake. The Plan Commission reviewed this, had a hearing on this at the last Plan Commission meeting last week. They did recommend that the conditional use permit be approved. The petitioners are here, as you said. The variance hearing is set for November 20th. I'm not sure if the petitioner needs the conditional use permit or not if the variance is not granted. They cannot be issued a building permit at this time for the proposed structure. So we're in a little bit of a waiting game on that. The variance hearing will be on the 20th. So I guess that's really the pertinent information here. I think staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Mary?
I have a question. When I was looking at the exhibit called Survey and Plans at 353 South Ferry Drive, I'm not sure when we are looking at this particular conditional use permit, if it, if the picture noted in that exhibit is what we're approving, only noting that the driveway doesn't appear to be placed in the, like, I'm not sure what the intention is of the driveway, and it just didn't look like that was addressed in this particular exhibit. And so I don't know if that comes up during building permit process or if that is something that is an, is, that needs to be corrected or discussed.
That's not what the application is for. It's for the replacement of the garage. I have only, I've reviewed the plans that have been submitted. I have reviewed them and compared them to the current overhead of the property that we have. I'm not aware of what changes with regard to the driveway are proposed. I don't think there's been a permit issued on that.
Okay.
If they are going to change what is existing to a new state, it must be in a conforming state. So I think that's kind of the best information that I have at this point.
Okay, thanks. Another question, then?
And I also have a question. Attorney Drescher, the, because they also need a variance, well, I think what you said was that they would not need the conditional use permit if the variance wasn't granted. So would it be appropriate for us to condition this permit on obtaining the variance, or are they sort of two independent items?
I believe they're independent items. I wouldn't really want to condition one on the other at this point in time because the variance is a standalone process. I wouldn't want to influence that or anything. And we have time, in my opinion, to, if the council is inclined, to wait until after you know whether or not the variance is granted. However, I think Ms. Schmager's question is pertinent in that issue. If there is a different reason other than what's provided in the application that the petitioner needs the conditional use permit for grading, excavating, lagooning, ditching within the 300 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Rock Lake, then perhaps it is appropriate to grant that conditional use permit at this time. I don't think we have plans that state that other than the what we have received regarding the actual removal of an existing garage and the replacement of that garage with, you know, their proposed structure.
Okay, thank you. And I have a follow-up question. Is there, precedent is quite the right word, but if the council were to grant the conditional use permit tonight, does that give any weight or indication that they're going to be getting a variance? I mean, I know those are two separate processes, so.
It shouldn't. To answer your question, it shouldn't. I'm not sure that it would or would not influence the zoning board of appeals. I mean, it is a practical response by the council saying we are at least allowing for grading, lagooning, ditching in accordance with the plans that have been presented. So I could see that argument, but it is non-precedential in nature. One does not absolutely follow the other, so I would think the previous statement that they are completely separate processes kind of still remains true. But I can't say with certainty that it wouldn't influence someone in decision-making.
Okay, thank you. And I know the Meyers are here tonight, and they would like to speak, so maybe if you'd like to come on up at this time and tell us about your project.
Good evening. So I did not take advantage of the opportunity when we met with the planning, the Plan Commission. So I thought today we would just introduce ourselves a little bit to the Board. So my wife and I, I think it's important, so this is our home. We've moved out here. We're permanent residents, year-round residents. I think that's, in some cases, not the case for homeowners along Ferry Drive, but this is our home. We've moved out here a couple years ago in 2023 and did so with our entire family. We've got three daughters that now claim Lake Mills as their home. So we enjoy it here. My wife stated shortly after moving out here that we hit the jackpot, and mostly because of the fact that, just the quality of life. The neighborhood is fantastic. We enjoy meeting our neighbors as they walk up and down Ferry Drive. The neighbors themselves are, have been very welcoming and have made our experience here to date exceptional. And just the community in general, just as we've entered, inserted ourself into the daily activities here. So I just want to say that who we are, are full-time residents, year-round. We enjoy it. We want to make this our home. The plan that we've put forward for this project is basically to make it a usable home. The prior owners had basically used this on a seasonal basis, and so one of the aspects with this addition of the garage is to make it a property that can be enjoyed through the winters, not just during the summers, right? So we're hopeful that we can get approval to go move forward with the project. I understand where we're at with the conditional use. I understand that there's a separate thing for the variance, and I understand that we'll work, we'll work through that probably in, at the end of the month. And to the extent that this could be granted conditionally, I think might help us along in terms of starting to execute the project in December. We had entered into this with Troy at the front end, stating that we were looking to break ground and do this yet this year, and he was helpful in getting us to this point. It's just, I think now we're just waiting for the boards to meet and take place, so. I think that's it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Meyer? No, okay. Sure, step to the podium, and if you could introduce yourself?
Hi, yeah, I'm Matt Rutzak from Bertelt Remodeling, the contractor, working with Andy and Melody. And I just wanted to state that the detached garage is not the only piece of the project that requires the conditional use. We are doing a small foyer addition as well, so foyer, new staircase. So that does get excavated for, and I assume needs to be approved as part of the conditional use, too. And it doesn't, you know, require any of the, any of the variance. It's attached and separate from the garage, but is part of the excavation happening.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we don't have a motion yet for this, so would anyone like to make a motion on Resolution 25-65?
I will move to approve City Council Resolution 25-65.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mary Schmager, a second by Michelle Quaid now. Any discussion? Questions, comments? I guess I'm just going to make a comment. I don't have any concerns with the project. I do, my preference would be that we would see these after variance was granted, because if for some reason variance is not granted, then we wouldn't need to be acting tonight, or the project plans would potentially change, and we would have to see it again, so. But understanding, and hopefully the zoning board of appeals and the property owners understand that our approval tonight doesn't represent, it doesn't, it's not the same as the standards for the variance, so you still need to go through that process. Again, I don't have any objections to the project. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. T, would you please call the roll on Resolution 25-65?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 25-66. Ms. T, would you read that for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-66, approving an allocation amendment for tax incremental District Number Three, City of Lake Mills, in Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
And again, why don't we have staff go through this first before we do any motions?
Sure. Brian, would you like to describe the item?
Yep, happy to do so. Thanks, Drake. I'm going to share my screen here, add some, some context to what I'm speaking to. Bear with me on that. All right, so the first thing to point out here is that this is, this is just an allocation amendment. So that means that ultimately this is not going to be, any change to the boundaries of the project of part of either TID or 8. You can see here in the map, this is an older TID originally started in 2000, it looks like 2006, and the newer TID in 2021 would be TID 8. So these are generally the boundaries, which would not be changing or projects as part of this. TID 3 is set to meet the debt obligations in 2026, and after that, it's ultimately generating surplus. And so the purpose of the proposed amendment really is to allow the annual allocation from TID 3, which would be the donor, to TID 8, which would be the recipient, obviously, of that donation, for the remaining life of TID 3. A performer was created as part of the development of the project plan, and that is included in the memo as well, as you can see. Now, as far as process goes, per state statutes, the taxing jurisdictions have been notified by letter. The first joint review board meeting was held, wasn't an action item on that meeting, but it was to present the plan and to go through the details, so they're familiar in advance of potentially another board review meeting. The Plan Commission did recommend approval at the October 28th meeting. Now, should council approve of the amendment, it would then go to Joint Review Board on November the 20th. And so this requested action really is a decision needed on, first, to determine if the city council approves the proposed amendment, and then, second, to approve the allocation amount from TID 3 to TID 8. And options presented in the memo would be to look at the 1,000, or 1,100,000 total, or increase it to 1,340,000, or change it to an entirely different amount based on discretion of this body.
So this is a proposal that I had asked our TIF advisors to work up for us. So because of the type of TID that the downtown TID is, is what makes it eligible to receive donations from other successful TIDs. The TID that's being donated from is near the end of its life. Not much or really any opportunity left to utilize those funds for improvement projects within that TIF district. So what this does is it takes those surplus funds and puts them into an area in which I think that they're better situated to meet the city council's economic development goals, which is into our downtown TIF district. After the Plan Commission public hearing, we did, we did take one more look at the cash flow of the TID and ran a few more calculations, which resulted in the alternative funding amount that you see in annual, an increase from the annual 110,000 to, I believe it's 140,000, which results in about $240,000 in additional funds that could be transferred to the downtown TID over its life. So that would be my recommendation, is to approve the alternative amount. And these funds will then be able to be transferred to a TID with a much longer lifespan, and I think with some of the council's highest economic development priorities, to be able to put those dollars where they can be best utilized.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Mary?
I have a question. What are, like, are there any negative consequences or risks for making this donation?
Um, not necessarily to the city, no.
Okay.
In the, if the donation wasn't amount, the surplus would simply build in that TID until its closure, and then those surplus funds would be dispersed to all of the taxing jurisdictions. And so those dollars just would be, they'd be, they'd go back to the, each of the taxing jurisdictions that are made up on the Joint Review Board and would not be able to be utilized for projects. The, the allocation, the donation, if for some reason the projections were incorrect, the allocation doesn't, you're not obligated to, to donate, to transfer. So there's not really much risk to the donating TID. I would, I don't foresee very many downsides to taking this step.
Okay.
Do you have an additional question?
I did, I had one additional question. I noticed one of the elements of the appendix was the legal opinion that wasn't noted, and I, I was just curious, the City of Lake Mills Attorney's opinion, so it's supposed to be yours?
I draft a letter at the end of the process for all of this.
I was just curious, a process question? I didn't know if that was material for a decision.
I'll submit that, assuming that you vote moving forward. I personally believe, I've reviewed the statute, I've reviewed the plan. I believe that this is in accordance with what is allowed by the statute, specifically because the receiving TID is a blight remediation TID. This is allowed under statute. I think it's, from an economic development standpoint, an effective way to use and capitalize on the funds that are gathered through the TID, the life of TID 3 at this point in time. I wait for presentation in front of the second Joint Review Board meeting for my attorney opinion letter, because it just doesn't even matter until that point, so.
Okay, because I was actually thinking your opinion would matter?
Well, it does.
Just kind of like.
I just basically gave it to you. I think that this, this is appropriate under statute.
Okay.
I appreciate the questions that you've asked with regard to, you know, downsides especially. It, as a matter, of course, I've usually just done it at the second Joint Review Board meeting. That's all.
The Joint Review Board is final action on this item. So the city council sets the allocation amount, and then that gets forwarded to Joint Review Board for final action. So the Joint Review Board is the entity that must approve the project plan amendment.
Okay, thanks.
I have a follow-up to, sort of to Mary's first question. So I guess sort of related to risks. So if the, if we approve the resolution or some version of the resolution tonight, the different taxing bodies do not receive, would not receive in 2033, would not receive a distribution, but there could be potentially a distribution earlier if something happened in TID 8. Am I understanding that correctly, or would their distribution be later, coming from TID 8?
There would be, if TID 8 is successful, as we project it to be at the, by the end of its life, there would be a distribution at the termination of TID 8.
Okay, so the distribution of the taxing, taxing districts would be later?
It occurs at the termination of the TID.
Potentially then 2033.
So anything that isn't donated from TID 3 will still be dispersed. So any additional surplus that wasn't part of the allocation will still be dispersed. But the redispersment to the taxing jurisdictions only happens when a TID closes, not in distress, essentially. It has a surplus amount that then goes back.
Okay, thank you. And so just one other question then for you, Drake. You are recommending that the council approve the alternative amount, and if I'm reading it correctly, the resolution is written for the original amount, so we would need to amend that if someone wanted to follow your recommendation.
Correct.
I actually have one more follow-up with that. The alternative amount that's in the memo, it's 100, it's 110 for the first two years, and it talks about meeting the debt obligation. Is that, we wouldn't, are we looking to approve 140 a year, starting this year, or 110 for two years and then 140 after?
It's the, it's the structure as out, as laid out in the memorandum from Meaden Hunt. So the 110, it essentially has the lower amount while the debt is being retired, and then increases it after that, because there are no more obligations in TID 3. It has no other debts to pay.
Did that address your question, Greg?
It absolutely does. I'm just looking at the resolution, trying to figure out what the, the appropriate wording is.
Okay, okay. So I think we can start with the, if there are no further questions, we can have a motion. Would that need to incorporate the amendment if someone wanted to do that, or we could do?
You could, and then you'd only have one motion.
All right.
So, I mean, it could be a motion to adopt City Council Resolution 25-66 with the, with the, with the replacement, sorry, a motion to adopt Resolution 25-66 utilizing the TID 3 allocation amendment alternative amount with the structure as provided within the memo provided by the city's planner dated October 30th, 2025.
All due respect, I think it might be clearer to just revise letter C in the resolution and just list those dollar amounts?
Sure.
And then that would be maybe a little more straightforward. But Greg, were you thinking about making a motion? Do you have an idea how you want to do it?
I want to do it however it works the cleanest, so.
No pressure, Greg.
Okay, in that case, I would make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 25-66 with the alternative amount as outlined in the memo, as the, as the amount instead of just the flat 110.
Attorney Drescher, is that sufficient clarity?
Yeah, I think that's consistent with Drake's advice there. I'm, I don't have the memo in front of me, so I want to just confirm the numbers.
Perhaps, perhaps, perhaps we could state on page two of the memo, or, I mean, it's be more specific about.
Brian, it's accurate that it's 110,000 in 2026, 110,000 in 2027, and 140,000 each year thereafter until the expiration of TID 3.
That's correct, yes. It's in the second paragraph of the background describes it. And then also is shown here.
So perhaps.
In the table, it looks like 2025 has 110, or is it supposed to be?
Yeah, so it's 2025, 110, 2026, 110, and then going to 140 in 2027.
So assuming the Board of Review, or the Joint Review Board approved it, the allocation could start in 2025, the donation?
Correct, the donation could, but relative to the discussion, the increase would occur in 2027, once that debt obligation has been met.
That was ahead by a year. So the, the motion could be, if Greg was, you could make it, if you wanted to be more specific, it would be a resolution to approve 25-65. it, if you wanted to be more specific, it would be a resolution to approve 25-66, amending section C of the fifth, whereas a statement of the proposed allocation of 110,000 annually for the years 2025 and 2026, with an increase to 140,000 annually for each year thereafter until the expiration of TID three?
Yes, yeah.
So is that the motion you'd like to make, Mr. Koots?
Yes, that is the motion I would like to make.
Hey, and hopefully Misty's following along on this as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Koots, seconded by Ms. Schmager to adopt resolution 25-66, amending section C. So it's 110,000 annually in the years 2025 and 26, and 140,000 annually for the, I'm paraphrasing, for the remaining lifetime of TID three. Those would be the donation amounts. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments? I would just like to make a comment. I think this is a very strategic approach to trying to get something going in our downtown district. And I really appreciate, Drake, you bringing this idea forward. I think this is, can, will really give a boost to, to date, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that that helps us get where we want to go in the downtown. And I appreciate you recognizing that this has been a priority of our, the council and our community.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments, discussion? Seeing none, Misty, would you please call the role on resolution 25-66?
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is resolution 25-67. Misty, would you read that one for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-67, resolution authorizing the city manager to terminate the intergovernmental agreements for building inspection services with the towns of Lake Mills, Oakland, and Kashkunan.
I move to approve city council resolution 25-67 as written.
Mr. Koots will second.
Motion by Ms. Quaidnow, seconded by Mr. Koots. Drake, anything you want to?
All of the townships have already been notified of the changes in our building inspection services. We've discussed with them an option that would allow us to still coordinate a contract on their behalf, which they're still welcome to engage with us on. This is a procedural, a procedural necessity to essentially terminate the IGA as it reflects a service in a manner that we don't currently provide any longer.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, Misty, would you please call the role on resolution 25-67?
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is resolution 25-68. Misty, would you read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-68, city manager compensation.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve city council resolution 25-68, city manager compensation.
Mr. Koots will second.
Motion by Ms. Quaidnow, seconded by Mr. Koots. Any discussion? So the council's completed our annual review with you, Drake, and thank you for another year. We're very, very happy with your work on behalf of the city and appreciate your leadership in managing all of our operations and a number of strategic areas of excellence that we've been talking about. There's been a lot going on over the last year and a lot to come in the next year. So we appreciate your service to the city and our community.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to serve Lake Mills.
It's the end of your third year and the beginning of your fourth year. So thank you so much. With that, Misty, would you please call the role on resolution 25-68?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. I did forget to highlight that you are very close to achieving your certification for ICMA credential manager status. And I think you've shared with us that very few people actually hold that within the International Association. So that's quite a, quite an accomplishment and having two young children along that pathway as well. That's surprised you were able to squeeze that in. So thank you for, that shows your dedication to your, to your profession. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Next agenda item is, I lost my page here, ordinance 1284. Misty, would, this is our second reading for the general fund budget. Would you read that? Do the second reading for us, please?
Ordinance 1284, 2026 general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
Thank you. So that will move to third reading and a vote at our next meeting. Any, any changes or anything that you want to update us on, Drake?
Some updates based on health insurance costs, typically within what was discussed. Just ensuring that all surcharge costs and terminal fees with existing providers are accounted for within the budget. Beyond that, it's largely similar to what was presented. So there'll also be, there will also be the public hearing at the next meeting as well.
Thanks for the reminder on that. And anybody that follows the news, the, you know, cost of health, rising cost of health insurance is affecting everyone, not just our city. So I appreciate, Drake, you and your staff, you know, navigating all of that and trying to, you know, retain some benefits for our employees. Okay, so we will move on to public hearing and final reading on ordinance 1284 at our next meeting. Ordinance 1285 is our next item, and we're due for a second reading tonight. Misty, would you do that second reading?
Ordinance 1285, 2026 capital budget.
Thank you. And this is one, does this also have a public hearing?
Yep, same, yes.
So we will have that public hearing and third reading of ordinance 1285 at our next meeting. Any questions or comments on that one?
Yeah, a question about the capital budget. Was this document going to be updated with a, with Sandy Beach allocation?
It will be for the third reading.
Thanks.
We're still trying to pin down what that's going, what that needs to look like.
Yep, that makes sense.
Thanks, Greg. So our next agenda item is announcements and recommendations for future agendas. And one of the items I had actually wanted to have this evening, but we'll have next time, is just our next steps on Sandy Beach. We had some discussion. It was reported in the Leader Independent about what we want to do next, probably having a work session, updating our master plan, but exactly what scope and timeline and process we want to follow on that. I don't think we have given our staff clear direction on that. So hopefully we can give them some clarity and talk about that a little bit at our next meeting and then be able to move forward with that process. And we have our two budget items that will be on the next meeting. We had the zoning amendment that was postponed from tonight. That'll be back for, well, it'll be back on for first reading. Anything else? A wastewater, something on wastewater, right?
Yep, there will be a public hearing on the draft facilities plan for the wastewater treatment plant. And there were the utilities budget resolution will also be on the November 18th agenda. We approved the utility budget by resolution rather than ordinance on the municipal side.
So that only has the one resolution? It doesn't have a three reading process?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council members? No? Okay, seeing none, then I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.